Okay, so we are gonna call to order at 6:03. Eric?
Here.
Megan?
Here.
Sam?
Here.
Linda?
Here.
Mayor? Laura Scott-Presence. Um, great, welcome everyone. Uh, we are in a slightly different space tonight to accommodate democracy. We have our early voting set up on the second floor, which is again available tomorrow, I believe, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. If you'd like to vote in the primaries. Um, we're gonna begin with correspondence. Megan?
I don't have any correspondence, but I should confirm that before. I was so busy with the one computer.
Yep.
We'll be quick.
There is just a gift, I believe.
That sounds right. Just confirming that I don't have any communication from... I do have one, either correspondence.
Okay.
Um, I'm glad I checked. We got an email, um, from Melissa Weinberger.
Oh, yes.
Um, with some really thoughtful, uh, questions and exploration into, um, what other communities are doing for a ban on cell phones, whether or not that's feasible or possible in our high school.
So Melissa, stay tuned for our discussion later this evening regarding the EHS policy handbook.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, right. Um, that's how you build suspense, people. It's sweet, sweet.
Well done.
Gifts?
I do have a gift. I motioned to approve the donation of plants for the East Hampton High School graduation stage from Carolyn Sheel of Sheel Farm.
You've done that historically for, I don't know, 20 years? Beautiful. Thank you so much to Carolyn and Sheel Farm. Uh, we are gonna open the floor for public.
Can we get a second and a vote?
Yes, we do. Can we get a second?
Second.
And all those in favor? Um, opposed, stenched, motion carries? Uh, do we have anyone interested in speaking? Uh, we don't have anyone in the room, but perhaps somebody outline? We'll give you just a minute or two in case anyone has anything to share. Oh, is that a hand up, Lindsay?
It is.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Lindsay Sekula, East Hampton resident and parent of a former graduate and a rising ninth grader as of tomorrow. And I just wanted to say, um, kudos to EHS School Committee. Um, and I am in support of the new cellphone policy that I received via email from, uh, Mr. Evans this past week. I think this is very needed after watching, um, one student struggle through four years of cellphone use in the school system. So I fully support this policy and hope it stays in place.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, would anyone else care to share? Can we give it another five seconds? Okay, we are moving on from public comment to the superintendent update. Um, are we going straight to have something else to share? Are we going straight to handbooks?
We're going straight to handbooks except for to, um, make sure everybody knows stats will stats tomorrow, except for kindergarten school, which starts on the fourth. Uh, we had a conversation yesterday with all our employees that went very great. We had a guest speaker. The focus of everything was how school is for students and not for adults that we've already gone through our years of schooling and our job of service, uh, to the students that we see every day and to do as much as we can for, for every student. And, uh, we, we also at the beginning took a video and everybody, uh, in the school district welcomed all children back. So we have a video that we sent out on social media yesterday, and it also included, uh, the video of all staff welcoming students back tomorrow. And tomorrow we do have a first grader Liam, uh, and his sibling that are gonna be riding the fire truck to school.
So, uh, are you catching a ride with them?
I'm catching a ride with them tomorrow, starting at eight at the fire station. We'll go to Liam's house. I hope Liam is paying attention because we're all excited that we're going to his house to pick up, uh, him and sibling, and then they will arrive at the elementary school at 8:30 tomorrow. So anybody like to see that? That's gonna be a real fun time tomorrow.
Um, do you wanna make a note about the high school start day? Because I believe it's just the freshmen who show up at the regular times.
Yes.
Sure, ninth graders come at nine, at 7:30.
Yep.
And then 10, 11, and 12 graders come at 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock. And then pre-K starts the fourth, and kindergarten starts the fourth grade. All right, um, so we wanna begin with the East Hampton High School Student Handbook. Yes. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you very much. So, um, I see that people have shuffled papers. You've received a copy of the changes that we'd like to add, um, or make for the handbook this year. So, um, starting with the first one is that we're adding a description of the Handle With Care program on page seven, um, of the handbook. I, um, I would assume that you don't wanna read this.
I'm fine if you don't read this.
Already read it.
I'll defer to the chair.
I think we're fine. It's a long, it's several paragraphs. Do you wanna sum it up for us?
Sure. So Handle With Care is our partnership with the East Hampton Police Department to ensure that students, um, who have experienced, um, any kind of intervention on the outside, while they're at home or in the community, that the school gets some kind of, um, heads up from the police department that this student should be handled with care. Um, there is no other information that is shared in terms of what happened or why, just that this person may have, um, experienced something that requires some adults to follow up with them. Um, so we're very excited to be partnering with the police department on the Handle With Care program. We think it's exactly the right tone and partnership that we need with them, and hopefully it'll help students, uh, get through these difficult times that they have.
Um, and for those of you at home, will we send this or you'll see this? It'll be on page seven of the handbook. Okay?
Next change is, um, on page 17, um, adding the description of the Bright program under the School Counseling Services. We'll leave this on. Um, so the Bright program, Bright stands for Bridge for Resilient Youth in Transition. It's a transition program for students returning to school after an extended absence and/or for students experiencing difficulty managing demands of a school day. Bright program is staffed by a clinical coordinator and academic coordinator. Referrals for the Bright program are made by the student support team. Um, I think you were aware that this, uh, was made available to us by a grant.
A lengthy presentation, those who would like to see Julian Levin discuss it at length, I believe it was in a June meeting. Um, so you can go back and see, it was really, it seems like a wonderful program and a great opportunity, and we hope to expand it down to the middle school level in the future.
Yeah. So we are fully staffed on the Bright side and very excited to be introduced into the service to our students. And finally, um, saving the best for last, our changes to our electronic devices, um, procedures. So, um...
Page?
It will be on page 21 of the handbook. Uh, I did provide a short summary of, yeah. So page 21, um, item five under electronic devices is where the change starts, I believe. Um, yeah, so, um, the new language will say that students are required to store their cell phones in the teacher-specified area, using the example of the phone pouch, uh, during class time unless specifically allowed by the teacher to help achieve the lesson objectives. Students may also choose to store their cellphone in a locker or at the main office. Students may not keep their phones on their person's or in their bag during class time. Cellphone breaks will, I'm gonna change that to may, at some point may be permitted and supervised at the teacher's discretion, and students are not permitted to take their cell phones on individual classroom break.
So can we clarify? We're not taking phones at the beginning of the day and holding them to the end of the day. We are taking cell phones at the beginning of every class, and they're returned at that class. The student travels to the next class where they turn in the phone for that class, so they have access to their phone between classes, before and after school, and during lunch.
Right. And during a supervised break.
Correct.
Eighty-four minute classes, we often have a five-minute.
Yep. Wonderful.
Uh, the other change is a little bit in this second item there, which is, I will leave number six in the electronic devices, um, procedure there, says if the student refuses to place their cellphone in an approved designated area or is using a phone during an individual classroom break, the student will be subject to teacher intervention slash discipline and/or sent to the main office for progressive discipline. That's outlined below.
Okay, my copy doesn't include the teacher part first, but that's presumably an edit that will go in.
I apologize, we did a little bit of...
That's great. I like your version better. That sounds wonderful.
Thank you, yeah. There was a few edits.
Yeah, no, that's great. Does anyone have any questions?
Megan? One. Um, first of all, I think it's fantastic. I'm super happy. And so my question does not come from, I, I'm worried that this might happen, but I can anticipate one question would be, they're, so they'll be in the classroom at a place where, let's say there's an emergency at some point, students could get them to contact. Okay, I just want that to be on record that they're, they're in, right there in the classroom, in the classrooms, and they, it's not like the pouch doesn't open till the end of the day or...
Right.
Whatever. Okay, great. That's one that's beyond...
It could also be mentioned that in our emergency procedures, often cellphone use is prohibited during certain...
Sure. So whatever policies are, uh, existing, those who proceed, right.
But, no, students, um, they could choose to put it in their locker.
Yes.
And that locker may not be accessible during an emergency situation. So they could put it in my office, same thing.
Same thing.
But as a tourist advantage.
Right.
Perfect. Seems like a wonderful compromise.
I agree.
Anyone else have any questions?
I just have a...
Yes, Sam?
I have a question because I, um, haven't been a student in a while, and when I was a high school student, there were cell phones and apparently don't have a high schooler. So this feels like a little bit of a black hole for me. I just can't really imagine students in high school with phones, uh, very easily. So can you just like describe, like, how do, in general, how do students feel about policies like this? Are they, like, generally, like, do they understand having to give their phone up? Is there a lot of resistance?
This will find out tomorrow.
I will, I will interject that I was told, um, in July that there just better not be this thing where we have to give off our phones, and that I was gonna have all this, you know, hours or change this. And I just said, oh, it'll just be fine. They'll be fine.
I think your policies are really smart.
They'll be fine. But yes, they'll, they will be a little...
So, yes, I think, I think, um, he is correct that they're going to be, uh, with this didn't stand, but I know that's part of the reason for getting it out sooner than this meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
So that it's a chance to process, and I've talked to some parents who've had the conversation at home, and kids were, "Hi, I'm a student," you know, not happy, for the record, um, because "by our" doesn't really translate. Um, but then, okay, you know, now you understand, and we will, uh, there will be exceptions for medical reasons, there'll be exceptions for, uh, your surgery or circumstances. We will work with students. We will come up with alternative plans that maintain the, um, integrity of the program without denying students access that they need.
Yeah.
Uh, provided that there's a process and that there are, uh, either a team or a clinician or a professional who says this is why this is required. So I think it will, um, be really successful for the vast majority of our students. I think a few of our students are really good students. Um, I mean, addiction is a real word that can apply here. Um, and that this is going to be really, really successful for some, and their courses.
I will hold you all in the light. Good luck.
I just wanna say, I appreciate the policy because I do believe, I don't think banning things in general is helpful, especially if something that these students are gonna have for their lives, they have them now, they're gonna have in the future. I think it's much more, um, a positive way to have, teach them how to deal with it. And like you said, the kids who do struggle, I mean, I see with my own kids at home, when you take away a tablet and you see their reaction, you're like, that's why I'm taking it away. This is scary how upset you are with this device being removed from your possession. So I think it's really helpful that, and kudos to all of the high school staff because it's not an easy job, but it is something that's super necessary for kids to say, "Oh, okay, I have to learn how to manage this as a tool." And like you said about when there's emergencies, it's my understanding that when there's emergencies, when kids do have total access to their phones, it ends up being worse because it just spreads all this information to parents that usually is not even the case. So, um, I think that it's a great initiative, and I think that, yeah, banning it is just, it's not really gonna help kids learn. It's like banning books, like, you just have to learn how to work with what you have.
Yeah, I think, you know, we've, we've, um, really defaulted over the last years of trying to teach some self-regulation. Um, I think what, what we've learned over the last few years is that on their own, they're really, you need more support, more guidelines, more restrictions, uh, more boundaries around it, uh, particularly during instructional time. And I think, um, they will be surprised at how they can...
I wanna say again, how you're doing it is so smart because it is a gut punch to turn something in that is not in your view for the length of a day. I think better to train the brain to say, "I'm checking this into the space I exist in for this period of time to focus my attention here."
Yeah.
But this thing that is important to me is right here.
I think it could, yeah, and even in the future, not that it's your responsibility, but teaching, it could be a family situation in the future where I even, with my kids, I say, you know, schools, the school season is starting, you're gonna be on your tablets much less, but I also want you to help dad, because if I'm on my phone, I want you to be able to say, "Are you checking email?" Sometimes I'm working, but if I'm watching a video, I can say, "Yeah, I really don't need to be watching this right now." And my daughter has the little duck box that she has, and she'll put it in the box because I need help too. So I think it could be in the future, kids going home and saying, "Hey dad, I think you might wanna put that away for a half an hour and let's do this," or something, and it could be a really refreshing thing that gets passed on.
You're gonna get a lot of emails.
Sorry about that.
And since I said at the beginning, there were also comments, and a lot of students say that other kids on their cell phones during classes very distracting to them and upsetting them, frankly, because they're in there and it's just a distraction. So I do really like the fact that it's for this period, and it's kind of like, you know, you turn off your cellphone when you're gonna watch a play, you turn off your cellphone when we're here or we're doing this work, and so it kind of starts structuring them into that.
Great point, Linda.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I just will add, I think that also there'll be a lot of them who are relieved, even right off the bat.
Yeah.
That they don't have to battle it anymore, that, like, the decision's been taken out of their hands.
Yeah. Yeah, so, it's great. Anything else you'd like to share?
Thank you very much for your...
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Best of luck tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No offense, but I'm not gonna hang around.
No offense, yeah.
And getting it for tomorrow.
Cheers down here.
Yes.
Cheers down.
These are new.
These are very new. There's...
These are... Okay. Yes, we would entertain a motion to approve if there's no further questions.
I'll move to approve the EHS handbook.
Thank you, Megan. Do we have a second? Thank you, Sam. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stenched? Motion passes. Um, we're gonna move on to MBS. Do we have one handbook or two for EHS? We have one.
We have one, but we also have a district one.
I see.
So you, so you have the district...
The student family handbook is district-wide?
Yes, we have a district one. That would have a lot of other information that even one of the others don't have.
Are you gonna present for us the Mountain View?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't have Jill waiting.
I had the kindergarten...
Yep, not a problem.
Kindergarten bus today, which was adorable. Pitch is already out on it. And, uh, sixty, close to sixty kindergarteners came and got on the bus, and they drove them around for ten minutes, and the parents were all outside there waving to them, and it was a cute picture because you can't see kindergarten's head. Right? So they, so they took the picture, yeah, it was like, it was so, so adorable. Uh, so, and only two students cried, so that was great.
How many parents cried?
I think it was difficult for parents to put their children, you know, like a kindergarten on the, on a bus. Right? So that's a really good idea, I think, that, that they get to try the bus before it's time to actually have to get on the bus. So that works out great, so that's why Jill, uh, she was over there with the... So, uh, which one do you want me to do first?
Uh, let's do Mountain View.
Mountain View.
And then we'll do the district.
Okay, so, uh, Mountain View is exactly the same except for, uh, we did have a meeting with the administrators to talk about, uh, there were parents, the end of the last year, and several work sessions, and also they came on, uh, to speak during pre-speak, that they wanted, they felt as though they weren't understanding so much how this thing worked. So we had a discipline committee, it was made of the administrators of, uh, both the high school and Mountain View, and, uh, and this document, which is added into the handbook, was there, and it's the part that talks about respectful, responsible, and safe, and it talks about, you know, it, it's a great, uh, document. Some of the conversation came out of the meeting of the Equity Committee that also meets over there, and it makes it much clearer for parents, and there are a lot of resources there. So I, I think it's a very well documented, and it was done, uh, for just Mountain View. And, uh, I can't remember, but, um, it's right, it's, it's right in the beginning of the book, and, uh, again, it's a section right on the students' rights, responsible, and it says respectful, responsible, and so you wanna take a look at it.
And then, do you just wanna take a moment, take this opportunity to just touch on what the cellphone policy is at MBS? I don't think they made provisions to it, but we've been...
No, it's the same, still just a highlight. Not allowed to have cell phones.
Your locker.
Yeah, not the, we can put on middle school, but, uh, elementary is allowed to have...
Or smartwatches.
Or smartwa, oh, the addition is the smartwatches, they have the...
And the AirPods. Yeah. Yep. It's a new one.
Something.
They're just getting smaller and smaller.
Yeah, yeah.
Plus, you know, when you have testing, high school and MCAST, you, you can't have your smartwatch on.
Yeah.
There can't be anything where you can do this communication.
Can I, um, can I ask, this might, it might be too late for this, um, at the, in the very beginning, um, there's like a description of the school council and a description of the parent teacher organization. Can I send you some language about can-do tonight to fill in that, just so that people... Which, for those of you who are listening, is the, um, is the, um, Special Education Parent Advisory Committee, who, and they meet once a month, and, um, it would just be a good thing for parents. So I'll send you some.
Yeah, send that tonight.
Send that tonight, yeah.
Well, 'cause I wear, gotta...
One at a time, yeah.
Yeah, we're at a time, send it tonight.
I'll send it to, I'll send it before we leave.
And then what we'll do is that I'll send it to Jean-Livie, who's sitting with her finger on the button.
Oh, cool.
So send up, so we can approve the handbooks for distribution tomorrow.
Can I add one thing too? In extracurricular activities, it lists the school activities that are available. Could they add a note about that, just a brief note about the process for adding a club? I think it's, they have to have ten students and a faculty sponsor, because that's a question that comes up again and again and again.
That's more, more for the, you know, the middle and the, I mean, the high school?
No, that's the policy, the middle school.
Middle school and the middle school, that's what I was gonna say, yes. So, let's see if we can add...
So, basically, we're doing this until the eleventh hour, so I think...
Yes. How to add clubs? I can contact, um, Jill after that. She must have that policy somewhere.
Even if they put it out, add it for next year, but if they send something out...
Even if they just put in there, "Who in contact," you know, it just says Jill again or whatever.
Well, the weekly newsletter that goes out.
There you go.
How about that? That's in the weekly newsletter.
Does anyone else have questions?
I just wanted to add two more things. Uh, one, Handle With Care.
Yeah.
We started that last year, uh, it was, it was started, um, in October of the year, and that's, uh, a really great thing. All, all schools have that, but that is now in all the handbooks and even in the district one. So Handle With Care is if something happens, uh, over the weekend or at night with the family, where the child's been exposed to any type of trauma, uh, the police, fire, or DCF fill out a form, and, uh, it's on a QR code, and it directly comes to, to myself and also the principal of the school. So they would open that up in the morning, would have the student's name, that an incident happened, no details of the incident, just that it happened, and that that child, uh, would be handled with care for that day, so that the child gets the resources they need and that they're, they're not upset about what happened that, through the whole day, that we're able to help them to process that.
And just, and I think that's really cool, and just to be clear, they're not actually sharing the details of what happened.
No, no details.
Just that there's been an encounter, so that people who know the student can maybe, like, understand if they're a little bit different or off. I think that's great.
And they won't cry.
Or, or they'll give them space to talk.
Right, that's right.
If that would be better for them, so.
Yeah, that's right. Yes.
Excuse me, a quick question about the, going back to the respectful, uh...
Yes.
Responsible safety. So I think it's, it's linked in here as a, like a hyperlink. Is it possible to put the form directly in, even a small version of it? The four, well, I have the, oh, okay, I can hear you.
I can, when I printed it, is it...
Hold on.
Is it different when you print it out?
When you print it out, it doesn't show you, because I noticed this too. It says the form is below.
Says the form is below, and I think it's a hyperlink.
And then it's a hyperlink. That's right, right here.
So can that be put in?
I printed it and I got the form. Okay. All right, so we wanna...
Maybe you opened it once and now it's all stuck for something.
Show the hyperlink.
Yeah. Yeah, it threw me off at first too, because I was like, oh, did I not print that page out?
So, we want this to be...
Click it.
Right?
That'd be great.
Okay. And the other part is the change in the Chromebook policy. So, uh, this year, we really lost over $10,000 in Chromebooks.
Huge.
Of kids not returning them.
They're cheap, that's a lot of Chromebooks.
It's a lot of Chromebooks, and it also, sometimes it was just a cord, but everything is labeled really carefully now, so you, you know that that's your Chromebook and that is your cord. So, uh, we have a new policy that if you, you know, if it breaks, you know, by accident you drop it, that's a different story, but if you don't turn in the Chromebook, we're gonna charge you for it because of, we can't keep doing this and keeping everybody a Chromebook and not receiving it back. So now the policy is here, and there's a signature page, uh, that says, you know, this is the one that we, uh, we always used to have in the middle and the elementary, and we added it to the high school now. So you have to return that you've read, read the book. It, it's about access to the internet, it's that you've read the handbook, and then there's a swat here that says you have also read the Chromebook policy. And so those need to go back by September 30th to the, usually it's the homeroom teacher, the classroom teacher, or a class you, or at the high school, it's the, uh, teacher that does the advisory. or at the high school, it's the, uh, teacher that does the advisory.
Um, do you happen to know, like, which students generally have Chromebooks sent home? So that, like, is that, does that start at a particular grade?
So the high school can take them home.
Okay.
And the middle school.
And the middle school.
And the middle school.
But not the elementary school.
Elementary don't use them, unless there's a reason.
They, like, work on a project.
That's right.
Okay.
They'll be allowed to, yeah.
Sometimes in elementary school, but not.
Or, uh, adaptation of an IEP. Or it might be an L student that is doing some, some work to learn language.
So it's more like as needed for the elementary school?
As needed, yes.
Okay, cool. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't one of the people who lost one. Yeah, I would say, we never got one. Was it supposed to get home?
Um, any, any other notes?
Uh, not on the Mountain View one.
Anybody have questions about the Mountain View handbook? Can we entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the MVS handbook with the changes we discussed for tonight?
Yep, thank you, Megan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? Okay, we are going to move on to the district.
So the district one actually has a very large, uh, there's fifty-nine pages, I think, in the, uh, district one. It covers a lot of policies, uh, that we get from MAS C. Yeah, there's also a link that's provided, uh, there's a letter that went with it. I sent you a copy of the letter. And in there, there's a link that goes right to the school committee, uh, website that has all the policies. And then as, uh, as we update them, um, we will write updated in the date so that they're up to date on the website, the school committee policies. So, um, MAS C, uh, did update one that we, um, we will, we'll review, but I wanted to make sure that it did get here because our legal counsel, uh, was very strong that the new Title IX requirements have to get in this handbook. Uh, they're much more, um, stringent than they have ever been. And so that is, was on page twenty-four. So all of the new Title IX is, uh, in the district, uh, book. And also, as you can see, all the other ones that have been updated are also in there. And then when we update some of our others, uh, we will change, change what we have to, because we, we have the, um, document for this, so then we'll change it here, but also change it on the website. So I'm not sure that a lot of people knew that you could go to the school committee website and all, everything that's been approved or the process being approved is listed there. And if they want to know about bullying procedures, they want to know, um, about, you know, anything, uh, harassment. They want to know about sexual harassment now, which Title IX is, has a big focus on. It talks about, you know, the procedures, what defines it. And, um, I think it'd be very helpful for parents to be able to become informed of all those policies.
I also would, um, just in general, um, whenever I'm trying to problem solve with a parent about something that's come up in the district, I always, um, I always ask that we, like, go to the written policy. Like, it's, you know, because you can talk to different people. People are always going to give you kind of their understanding of what the policy is. It makes it easier on everybody if we can just go back to what's in writing and start from that. So I definitely recommend any parents who are trying to troubleshoot or who have questions, you know, um, about, you know, something that they don't really understand. If you need help finding any of those policies, I'm very happy to help you out, as are other people here, I'm sure. Um, and, uh, other folks at school. So it's always good to go back to what's in writing. And this is a good, I read through the whole thing, I really like it.
Good.
I feel like it's very readable.
It's very readable and it's, uh, accessible.
And all of this is obviously available in Spanish as well on the website.
Well, they, it's with the Google, we can do the Google translate.
Okay, cool.
My only note is that I wish it had a table of contents on.
Yes, so it has table contents in the end.
In the back.
Document.
In the back.
Not. Here it is, it's a full table of contents. So the, the problem is with the Word document, it automatically makes your table of contents after you finish the document.
Oh.
Could we put a note on the second page first, or, like, not your cover page, but could we put a note on that first page with text, table of contents at the end of this document?
Doesn't make sense, the table of contents at the end.
Because I, I didn't see it.
Page is fifty-six, fifty-seven. In terms of the tool we're using to.
Yeah, that's why, I'm glad it's there, it's just nobody's going to know.
A note. Index slash table of contents.
Yeah.
Right here.
It feels like an appendix to me.
Yeah, it looks like an appendix.
Just to get it right there.
Index.
Note.
Okay.
Yeah.
Table of contents on page fifty-five, fifty-seven, right?
Any other notes you want to make for us? Does anyone else have?
Very. It had not been updated for a couple of years, so I think.
We don't have any questions?
Let's put this in there.
Eric?
Yep. Do we have to vote on it?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve the, um, district policies handbook.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? Fifty-eight pages, all right. Okay. Uh, anything else?
I'm texting on this. Not just the MOU, we have to.
Okay. Can we get Nick?
Oh, yeah, I'll do Nick.
Yes, okay. Um, Nick Burnier, good evening. For our business updates.
Good evening, everyone, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, great. Um, so a little bit of this, uh, monthly business report here will be dated just because it was meant to be read at the August thirteenth meeting, which had, you know, been postponed till tonight. But, um, FY twenty-four, end of year information. Uh, the books are closed on FY twenty-four and have been for, uh, a little over a month now. Um, the necessary, uh, you know, transfers and, uh, reclassifications have taken place in order to, uh, complete the process. Um, I should have final grants revolving from totals from the city auditor pretty soon, so I can reconcile those. It's kind of like the last piece that, you know, happens after we, we close out the general fund. Um, but, you know, really everything's done. Um, we just have to make sure our two ledgers balance in terms of grants. Um, I will report more end of year detail to the finance subcommittee, uh, whenever we, we meet. Um, the second item is regarding a new arrival to our department. A Ford Lightning electric truck, uh, will be, uh, was recently ordered through the city for our maintenance department. Um, it's going to replace a two thousand eight Ford F-one-fifty that was taken off the road last year. Um, we're very thankful for this. Um, it's not only will it fill a large need in the department, we've been without a truck for several months. Um, but it also aligns with the city's climate action plan. Um, and, and, you know, the ordinance that was recently passed by the city council regarding, um, environmentally friendly vehicles. So, um, we're, we're very thankful. It should be in in probably about a month from now, I would say. Um, we've been approved for a rebate, um, from the state, um, in the amount of, I believe, seventy-five hundred dollars um, for this. And, uh, the purchase through Marcot Ford came with a free charger. Um, so we just have to, uh, pay an electrician to install it. So, um, we're, we're excited about this. Um, I've never had the desire to drive one of Larry's vehicles before, but I, I think I do now, so.
Many city employees do not have that desire.
It arrives, I'm gonna, I might take it for a quick. Um, but anyway, um, third item, uh, is regarding our summer food service program. Um, it came to an end on Friday, August sixteenth. Um, I will compile data on meals served once I receive it from, um, our food service director from Chartwell, so I can report it at the September meeting. Um, he should have that to me by then. Um, I, I know participation definitely increased between last year and this year, um, largely due to the location, um, and the fact that it was inside an air-conditioned building. Um, and also there was, you know, students in summer programming at Mountain View that, you know, could just easily access the meals without really having to go anywhere. So, um, there'll be an update on that in September. I, I just, I don't know what the totals are at this moment. Um, for, uh, end of the year financial report, I will, um, I'm currently in the process of gathering information I need for that. Um, the report template's all set, I've, I've downloaded it. Um, I've started printing things, I've given memos to people that I need information from. Um, some of them have gotten that to me, uh, already. And, you know, once all that's collected, it, it'll take me a good three weeks to prepare the report. Um, that's with interruptions. I mean, if I could just sit in a cave by myself, I can probably get it done in like a week, but that's not reality. Uh, especially as school's starting and, you know, there's a lot going on. Um, but it's due by September thirtieth. I've not missed a deadline in my whole career, so I don't plan to start now. Um, and, uh, lastly, my personnel report. Um, but if I, uh, before I move on, are there any questions about the, the rest of this?
I have a quick question. Do you need us to have a finance subcommittee meeting in any particular timeline for the fi- for the, um, DSC report or anything?
No, no, I, I know, our, those are independent of one another.
Perfect, and we will wait till after you are done? That way you can maybe have more of a cave experience.
Yeah, and once that report's done too, you know, I, I kind of have like more accurate end of year stuff to report, if you will. Um, anything else before I go to the personnel report? Okay. Um, so, uh, the first page of it is, is just for the month of June. Um, there were no new hires, but you wouldn't expect that so close to the end of the year. Um, you know, quite a few separations, which is, is relatively common at the end of a year. There's a couple of retirements in there and, you know, a couple, uh, some folks moved on to other opportunities. Um, no transfers in June. Uh, and regarding vacancies, um, you know, dur- during the months of June and July, we're, and, you know, largely part of August, we're in the process of filling all those vacancies prior to the school year starting. So when you get my, uh, August personnel report in two weeks, when we have our September tenth meeting, um, you'll get all the new hires for the beginning of the school year, as well as what vacancies may be left at that point. Um, and then the last page of it is just the July personnel report. We, um, hired a new custodian at Mountain View. Um, on July first, we had four, uh, paraeducators separate in the month of July. Then we had one transfer. Um, we had a paraeducator from Mountain View transferred to our, uh, data coordinator position. Um, you know, which, uh, we were very thankful for. It's, it's crucial, um, that that position, um, just all the state reporting and the, uh, you know, accrual management and absence management and, um, that individual wears quite a few hats. So, uh, we were very happy for them to start. Um, and, you know, so far seems to be really enjoying the position. Um, so, um, and again, the vacancies, um, I mean, I can tell you there's currently five, uh, going into the, the school year, um, uh, which, you know, isn't terrible in terms of a number for, you know, right before, I mean, there's districts that probably have twenty vacancies right now. Um, but, you know, some of those positions are, we need to fill them quickly as well. I mean, there's a special ed coordinator in there, there's especially, uh, two special ed teachers at Mountain View and there's, you know, we, we do want to get them filled as soon as possible. Um, but we were able to hire and onboard quite a few folks in the last week and a half to, you know, at least fill most of the vacancies, so. Um, that's my report for the month of July. Anybody have any questions? Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next item is school committee discretion of a policy subcommittee. Do you have an update and a motion?
Um.
What's computer use policy, so we can submit?
Yes. So, um, in regards to an update, um, we have not met this summer, but it sounds like we're going to soon, because I would like to motion to move the computer use policy to subcommittee for review.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, motion passes? So no other update at this point?
Not at this point, yep.
Great. Um, finance subcommittee, Megan, do you have an update?
Um, my update is there's an update, we have not met. And as just explored, we will meet after the DSC report.
Okay.
Completed.
Um, CES, Sam, do we have an update on CES?
We don't, I, the last meeting was like in, at the end of June and I'm not sure. I think I gave an update at our last school committee meeting, so in that case, we have not met since then. We will be meeting soon.
Wonderful. Um, we are going to move on to action items, there are quite a few. Unless, do you want to do the MOU now?
Yes.
Yeah, great to do that.
That'd be great, I have to put that there.
So the MOU, uh, is involving, yeah, athletic director, uh, Dean Page, due for marking up the fields for athletic events. And so what has happened is that, uh, in the past, there was a booster club that used to do the football fields. And, uh, but, uh, they're still willing to, yeah, to help us with it. Uh, and we did hire a groundskeeper from Mountain View. And it was in the ground, groundskeeper's job description, except the ground, there's so much grounds to take care of at Mountain View. There was no way that we can release this groundskeeper to do the field. So we purchased our own machine and our own paint. And Brian Miller, who is the athletic director, last year did it with a borrowed machine from, uh, one of the football leagues. And so we just can't keep borrowing their machine. It's our fields. And some of them, it's for soccer and it's also for football. So, uh, he is already flying the fields, uh, now, because we had scrimmages, because football starts a little bit earlier than some of the other sports. And he's very happy to do that. So the union, uh, has already signed it. They had no problem with, um, paying him, uh, five thousand dollars, uh, to do the football games, boys and girls senior night, soccer games, line for track meets, line for practice field, along with the paperwork and the cleaning of the.
Okay. Does anybody have questions? Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve the memorandum of understanding.
Uh, Megan, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
Do you have a copy that you want me to sign? Actually, that's it. In time, I have one of these copies. Although it doesn't have the original signature, so I have to get that from Sue. Right, do you want the original signature?
I don't know. Do, do let me know what, yeah, I can have some.
I'll just sign this.
Okay.
And then it's, you have to get the original back.
Well, that's a, that's a dot. Oh. So I'll sign that just in case if you need me to. I'll do that, or yeah. Wait, all right, uh, we have several action items tonight. Megan, have you worn the results report?
Okay, I'm ready. Uh, motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated five thirty twenty twenty-four in the amount of two hundred dollars.
A second?
Second.
Thank you, Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
Motion to approve the school payroll dated five thirty twenty twenty-four in the amount of six hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Second?
Second.
We're just going to air it to all of them for a note.
Is she allowed to second?
Yeah, I'm just thinking yes, because they're all from before.
Okay.
Correct, but as of our next meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
This is my last.
This is your last.
My last go around.
Your last second screen.
Appreciate it.
His wife has a job.
Hired in district, so he can't vote on financial matters that impact her. And some of these don't, but I don't know.
The policy's so.
All right, uh, so that was a second. We'll get a second from Eric, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion B, passes?
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated five thirty twenty twenty-four in the amount of three hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? So in future, it will stay.
In future, it will stay. Okay, yeah, okay.
Uh, go ahead.
Motion to approve the school payroll dated six thirteen twenty twenty-four in the amount of six hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-four cents.
Second?
Is all these funds from last school year or is it impacting this year?
No, these go out, this is for, this, so, this goes out to cut checks.
Now, now.
Now you're getting second thoughts?
Tangled in it.
Why don't Sam do it?
Just Sam.
I'll second them all.
Oh, or whatever.
And then.
Okay, you went through C, that's fine, we're on D. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor? You're going to save from now on, okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eric? Motion passes? We're on D. Yep. Um, so it'll be D through.
And Sam, a second, and Eric is.
Because you see, and. You see how, okay. Motion A. Go ahead.
Okay, yes, I do see that, appreciate you putting, doing all that.
Uh, motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated six thirteen twenty twenty-four in the amount of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, Eric. Next?
Motion to approve the school payroll dated six twenty-seven twenty twenty-four in the amount of five hundred and ninety-one thousand, four hundred and five dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Motion to approve the school payroll dated seven eleven twenty twenty-four in the amount of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventeen cents.
Second.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Sam, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed, extensions? Thank you, Eric.
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated six thirty twenty twenty-four in the amount of four hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Second. Thank you, Sam, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, extensions? Thank you, Eric.
Motion to approve the school payroll dated seven twenty-five twenty twenty-four in the amount of three hundred and ninety-two thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed. Abstentions?
Same.
Motion to approve the school payroll dated eight eight twenty twenty-four in the amount of three hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and nineteen cents.
Second. Thank you, Sam, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extensions? Thank you, Eric.
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated eight eight twenty twenty-four in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-three cents.
Second. Sam, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, extensions? Thank you, Eric.
You are back on.
I was gonna say, I thought I checked through that.
Okay, and uh now make a motion to approve the school committee work session minutes of June fourth twenty twenty-four. Uh, this are in the packet.
Uh, second. Sam, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, extensions? Next?
Okay.
Um, so that was that one. Uh, a motion to approve the executive session minutes of June tenth twenty twenty-four, with the stipulation to withhold these minutes until matters are resolved, reviewed, and released by the chair, and again, the minutes are in the packets. Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Um, before we do this motion, we just need to have a brief discussion, so Eric's wife was hired in district, congratulations.
Congratulations.
I thought, what would she be doing?
She'll be teaching fourth grade at Mountain view.
Oh, awesome. So that means we had to move Erica immediately from the EEA negotiation team, and we now need to remove him from finance, because it will become, there will be certain things he can't.
Like most of finance.
Right. And then, and so also part of what the finance committee members do is um sign electronically the weekly payroll and authorization forms. So we have some options, there is Ben who is not here tonight, we have Sam, we have Linda, so we need to switch Eric off of finance into policy, so I would entertain a discussion about anybody who has an intervening interest in that, understand that it means you really need to be at your emails every Tuesday to be able to sign by end of business electronically on Tuesday, that's the only caveat.
I'm willing to make that change if I will, I'm willing to switch out.
That's fine, yeah. So, we are gonna read this motion, we don't need to move, I have the power to move you to that committee, that's fine, but we are gonna move to change the payroll want, signature payroll warrant signatory from Eric Gaiet to Linda Su Marquis. And Linda, for the first couple of weeks, I'll just text you a reminder. Once I get that email in, the school committee email, I'll just text you a reminder to go check it out, um, it's like, you can sign some, it usually comes on Tuesdays. If the latest, it will come on a Wednesday, if it comes on a Wednesday, sign as fast as you can, Tuesday just.
Sometimes I forget by a day.
It doesn't make just right.
Oh, they'll get you.
Then they'll follow up.
Yeah.
Well, they'll follow up with the school committee emails, so the thing is, if you're not checking it regularly.
We used to have to like come in and sign.
Yes, you did. I am for having it.
Times are so good now.
Yeah. It is, okay.
Okay, so I will make a motion to change our payroll warrant signatory from Eric Gaiet to Linda Su Marquis.
Second. Second, thank you, Sam, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, extensions? Eric will be missed, Linda, welcome aboard, girl.
Thanks, Linda.
Linda Su, I mean, I like that.
Okay.
Sorry.
Um, I thought that was the name they would probably put in your, that's on your email.
Because the only reason I did it is because it says your middle name, I had never gotten by Linda Su.
Now on.
But.
Linda Su.
I, I, I want.
Has a nice ring to it.
There's so many Lindas in my class, because if you met a woman my age, just call her Linda.
Same with Megan, a woman my age, so. Um, our next meeting dates, September tenth, October twenty-second, November twelfth, and December tenth, holy cow. A brief note to the public that we are about to kick off the next phase of our superintendent search. Um, in a perfect world, the application to be on the search committee will be on the website by Friday. In reality, it will probably be a week from Friday. Um, and we will keep the public updated, I'm sure we'll have more updates at our September tenth meeting, um. Anything else, yeah? Uh, we do, are we, oh, we are going into the second session.
Which I did not. So is that going back out in the schools, like a note home to people?
It did, it went in, there was a flyer that went home in backpacks the week before school let out. I'm trying to be eco-conscious and not send another flyer home, but depending on the traction we get in the first week of the online application, we might do that.
Okay.
In mid-September.
She sent a email.
We have the same, it went in an email, so just, we'll send the same one again. I would love to do another flyer home, but that's a lot of paper.
I'm thinking about, think about social media too. It could be.
Which, again, we're gonna do when the application is up, which they're still working on.
Yeah, got it.
And I've kind of no help with that, okay. Um, executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, C three zero A S twenty-one A three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. So we are going to move into executive session. Now, we are going to end our Google meets, we'll be adjourning the meeting directly from executive session. Thank you so much for joining us, and give us a couple of minutes to shut these lights off.
Happy first day of school.
Yeah.